We call the York County Council meeting to order. Councilmember Joel Hamilton will give the invocation and pledge.
Dear Henry Father, Lord, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather in these chambers to conduct the business of this blessed county. We are grateful for the freedom that allows everyone here to peacefully assemble and for the men and women in uniform you have called to protect those freedoms. Lord, we pray that you will take care of their safety as they go about their tasks. Lord, we also pray that you will grant this body wisdom as we move through our affairs, give us the vision to see into the world our children will inherit and the wisdom to shape it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would Laura Bailey please come forward for oath of office? Jason Hyatt to address the council from the York County Library on the bookmobile.
Chairman Johnson, council members, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you for just a few minutes and give you an update on York County Library's bookmobile project. Our old bookmobile, that some of you may have seen, lovingly referred to by staff as Camilla, served us well for about 15 years. And when we requested approval for a new bookmobile in this year's budget, we did not realize how timely that request would prove to be. Camilla had numerous trips to the county's maintenance shop and ultimately reached a point where the repairs were just too costly for us to reinvest in a vehicle that old and that had served for so long. Thankfully, the new bookmobile that you've seen in front of tonight's building was already in the works, and to the delight of all of us involved in the project, it arrived last Friday. And staff immediately set to work stocking the shelves with books, preparing the vehicle for the many, many people who will come aboard to check out materials, participate in the storytime, get their library card, or just learn more about the library. So in addition to this evening's visit here in York, the bookmobile will appear in the Come See Me Parade. Next week, we have a formal ribbon-cutting ceremony. The bookmobile will go on a tour of all of the library locations in the county, and then it will hit the road to resume regular bookmobile services. Last fiscal year, our bookmobile and outreach services department served approximately 40,000 patrons and provided close to 1,600 separate programs. That was with a bookmobile that suffered frequent breakdowns and staff constantly having to think on their feet to come up with alternatives so they could still deliver services even when the bookmobile was not running. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the efforts of Dina Grant, our community engagement manager, for leading this project to such a fantastic result, as well as her staff members who are present this evening.
Aye. Bookmobile staff?
Thank you. As well as Luann James, the library's grants and assessment coordinator, who played a major role in helping this project come to life. And I'd also like to recognize and thank the members of the York County Library Board who are attendants. They have enthusiastically supported this step forward for the library system.
Hello, board members.
Thank you. Our new bookmobile will allow us to provide an enhanced experience for patrons across the county. When the library rebranded a few years ago, we adopted the slogan of "Your Community Link." The bookmobile is a critical component of this and a highly visible reminder of the importance of literacy in libraries for anyone who sees it. It's also a truly one-of-a-kind vehicle. The artwork was created by children's author and illustrator Will Hillebrand, who graciously allowed us to use it on our new family and children's library cards, as well as on the bookmobile, at no cost. Because it was created especially for York County, it is no exaggeration for us to say that York County Library is the only library in the world with this bookmobile design. Thank you for your support of the project. It would not have been possible without the commitment of York County, as well as a competitive impact grant received through the South Carolina State Library. Speaking on behalf of the library staff, I can tell you that we are all very excited about the new bookmobile, and we look forward to growing our bookmobile and outreach services over the years to come. As we continue to make the library in all its formats, our physical locations, our virtual library, our bookmobile and outreach stops, meaningful connection points for everyone in York County, we will continue to pursue the ideal of being Your Community Link. Thank you again.
Next up, the mayors of York County to address council regarding parks and rec funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Geddes. I live at 300 Berkeley Road in Rock Hill. And I'm here with the mayors, or many of the mayors here in York County that are on the front row, and then also a lot of members of our Parks and Rec Commissions and the Recreation Coalition throughout York County. About two years ago, the Recreation Coalition came to the county to talk about how the county might consider or give consideration to increasing its contribution to the Recreation Coalition. At that time, the Recreation Coalition was told, "It's too late in the budget process. Come back next year." So this past year, the Recreation Coalition came earlier in the process, was told initially, "Yes, this is something that the county would like to do," but was later told, "No, this isn't something that we're going to entertain in this year's budget." That being said, the mayors, in our conversations, all wanted to make sure we got before you, the policymakers, during the budget season, so that you were aware of the support there is in our county to hopefully encourage the county council to increase your contribution to the Recreation Coalition. There's a reason for that. As the county, rightfully so, permits new construction throughout York County outside of the municipalities, whether it be residential, apartment, multi-use, or condominiums, there's a continuing number of people moving into the county. And as a result of that, those people that live in the county can go anywhere they want to, to any park that they want to, whether it be in the city of Tegukay, city of Fort Mill, city of York, or anywhere else. But we have no, the municipalities have no ability to tax or to seek fees or all, as we do, to bolster our general fund to meet those demands. So we see an increase in population, which is a curve like this, and then the contributions as it comes in towards recreation for all these new people outside the municipalities that is just on the cost of living, basically, the millage rate increase each year, what that brings, based upon new taxes being levied against new improved or better improved properties. And it's not keeping, it's not keeping up. It's not tracking appropriately. So what the mayors are doing tonight, as we're coming before, and I'm going to pass it to Mayor Eddie Lee in just a second, we'll pass along, is just making sure that the policymakers are aware of our request that the county consider increasing its contribution. My personal opinion is tripling the initial, the contribution that is now would be about right. But what we really would like is if the county council would direct staff to engage in this and to find an answer in your budget this coming year, so that it makes sense, and so that we can all continue to meet the needs of all the people of York County. We're getting into a point where the quality versus quantity conversation starts, and that's a losing conversation for the county, that's a losing conversation for every single municipality. The quantity is overrunning us all. We cannot maintain our quality as it is now, as we're asking the county to look at its contribution to that recreation fund as a result. Now, all the mayors are up here because what we all want to do, and I think each member of the county council wants to do, is we want to tackle big things. It's time for our community to tackle the big issues that face us. It's why we ran for office. It's why we do what we want to do. But if we can't handle the smaller things, we can't build the trust to do the larger things. So what we're here tonight to do is just give some due consideration in this regard, and a lot of other small things that we're trying to engage on, on a staff level and others, so that we can make this community, this county, these municipalities, the best in South Carolina, if not the southeast. We've got a lot of great things coming to York County, and we have a choice. We have a choice to just do what we're doing, and we'll be fine. Or we can do things we've never thought about doing before, and we can be exceptional. That's who we need to be, and that's who we are. With that, I'll pass it over to Eddie Lee.
I'm Eddie Lee, mayor of the city of York. This is chairperson and members of the York County Council. It's good to see you all tonight. All nine York County mayors realize that our county is growing rapidly. We know it, and you know it. Our citizens, who are also York constituents, expect quality recreation programs. The nine municipalities are committed to this goal. In the city of York, where we're meeting this evening, we offer everything from aerobics to zumba, from basketball to baseball, from football to yoga, from paved walking trails to covered picnic shelters. We hire and train the referees, we light the playing fields, we empty the garbage cans, we patrol the parking lots, we pay the staff, we erect miles of fences to keep the deer in their lanes, and we maintain the facilities. In my municipality, there are nine separate parks, and other two are planned. And anyone can use them regardless of residency. Thus, a Fort Mill mother can jog on our bike trail, a Tegukay child can participate in our soccer games, a Hickory Grove man can shoot basketball in our indoor recreation center on a rainy day, a Lake Wiley family can enjoy a leisurely picnic at one of our enclosed shelters. We do not turn anyone away, because recreation is a quality-of-life aspect of a growing county. We are constantly evaluating and reevaluating the various recreation offerings in response to public demand. So all nine of our municipalities request, as Mayor Geddes said a moment ago, a reasonable increase in York County's contribution to recreation funding, so that we in the cities of York, Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Tegukay, Clover, McConnell's, Sharon, Smyrna, and Hickory Grove can continue providing recreation opportunities for all the people of York County. Joining me this evening, we have Mayor David O'Neil of Tegukay, we have Mayor James Love of McConnell's, we have Larry Earl of Hickory Grove, we have Greg Holmes of Clover, and we have Mayor Gwen Savage of Fort Mill, who will follow me for a few brief comments.
Sitting in your seat, it's so easy to see people come and go that are asking for money. Sitting in your seat, I always hate it when they're asking for our money, because we want to give to everything. We want to be able to support everything, because it's not our money, it's our people's money, it's our constituency's money. But the word that struck me, as I have only a few comments here to say that I support readily what the mayors are asking for, was from the library, the enthusiasm. How often do you get enthusiastic about finding a way to fund something? It's hard. It's really hard, because you want to fund everything. But it's not hard to be enthusiastic to go walk on a trail, or to have a basketball court, or tennis courts, or picnic shelters. What family doesn't share enthusiasm to go to those types of facilities and enjoy the life that we all do here in York County? So I do support the mayor's group, as we stand before you, asking for money. But we are asking for your support. We want to work together with you to provide that enthusiasm a place to go. So thank you for your consideration. I'd like to recognize David O'Neil from my sister city, Tegukay.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. I'm going to give you some numbers. I was asked my staff to prepare some hard numbers for you. So in fiscal, in total participants for Fall '18, Spring '19, we had total participants, paid participants, of 4,678 people. Of that, 1,778 were addressed in Tegukay, the rest, 2,900, were unincorporated or other areas of York County. That represents 38% come from Tegukay, 62% come from somewhere else. Our Parks and Rec budget, we budgeted $520,850 for what we estimate around 11,000 participants. The county contributes to us $142,000. So our $520,000 pays for 38% of the participation, and then we get 142 from the county for 62% of the participation. Now, we have unincorporated areas that boundary, Tegukay, are very close. Our parks are the closest to them, such as Baxter Village, Waterstone, Fieldstone, Evolve Apartments, Braden on 160, and Knightsbridge. So we are only assuming that they are the ones that are coming to our parks and play. We have Windjammer Beach Park, Pitt Karen is a beach park and a boat launch, and I often see North Carolina plates there. We have Lookout, which is the disc golf, that's all for free. We have Trailhead Park, which is the beginning of our walking trails, and it's also got a jungle gym. We've got our Living Memorial Gardens. We have municipal tennis. We have four courts that are free. We have pickleball that's free. We all maintain all that. So what I'm asking for, oh, and recently, because of all the influx of other people from out of Tegukay, we've, we rented an additional 800 hours of field space from the Fort Mill School District and hired extra staffing. We're trying to build parks now, we're trying to build two parks, but of course, that costs a lot of money. And just like everybody else, we're always trying to find ways to get more money. So I join my fellow mayors in requesting additional funds to pay for all the people, especially not from Tegukay. Is anybody else going to talk? And with that, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, thanks for hearing us.
Thank you. No one signed in for public forums, so we will go to the consent agenda. Before we begin, does anyone have anything they would like to be removed from consent? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve consent.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. New business number one, council to approve a resolution committing York County to enter into a fee agreement with a company identified under the code name Project Combat and other matters related thereto.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? It is approved. Councilmember, new non-agenda comments. Mr. Roddy.
Let me get over a committee report, did you? Yeah.
Buried down here with the Philo. Zoning Committee meeting. Chairwoman Allison Love.
The zoning committee met on March the 26th, and Councilwoman Cox and myself were present, along with planning and zoning staff and David Hesput. We had three things on our agenda. One was the, to just hear the recommendations for amendments to RUD and RUD-1 zoning code. Those will be coming before council. They're finalizing some of that, and that'll come to council for some more input. We had a discussion regarding the rezoning process, and that has been added to the April 9th workshop, to just a few minutes at the end of that workshop, so that everybody's up to date on what we are proposing and why. And then the last thing that was on that agenda was, we just asked staff for some, some input at our next meeting, as far as what we can do as far as mass grading limitations and green space requirements. And that was the, that was really all of our meeting. I think two or three things out of that meeting will be coming before council. And that's it.
Thank you. Now back to councilmember new non-agenda. Mr. Roddy.
Yes, I just wanted to, I guess, make a quick comment. I was almost going to pull out one of the items under the consent agenda, but I decided not to, but I would like for staff to send me over documentation on permissible uses for the money that was a result of the lawsuit and the money that we have in trust with the Foundation of the Carolinas, that the museum and others get to apply for. I would like just to get a list of uses and terms that that money has to fall on before it's allowed to be used. So this was basically a comment for staff.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Cox.
I do. Tonight, we had the privilege of approving a resolution for a Philo agreement that was changed previously. This is my first stint serving on the Economic Development Committee meeting, and I'm learning a lot of information. But one of the things that I just had on my heart that really I wanted to share with council, and that I think that we should add to our council workshop, is for us to just sit down and have a discussion about how we address these Philo opportunities and how we evaluate them. And I think, you know, there's a lot of folks, including Greenville County, where our, they will be presented opportunities to approve a Philo, and the council disapproves them for one reason or another. And so it isn't always felt like if you disapprove a Philo that you are anti-business, which is not the case at all. I think all of us sitting up here on this council truly believe and truly are interested in making sure that we make good decisions about what business comes here. Some things that I've learned on this, though, and I think some concerns that I'm hearing from constituents are, we don't give tax breaks to our citizens. We don't give them a tax break at all. We don't reduce their millage, we don't cap their millage, and we can't afford to give tax breaks to every business that is in our community. If we did that, then we would be a tremendous problem. We would not be able to sustain ourselves. So I think we need to be really careful when we make these decisions, and I don't think that one particular council member should be labeled as anti-business because they challenge a discussion on that issue. With a 2.9% unemployment rate, and with a county that has driven jobs and has been one of the primary counties driving jobs in this, in this nation, we are in a very unique position to where we, we are, we have a luxury here. And I think in order to represent the taxpayers, in order to represent our existing businesses, we need to make sure that we do a thorough job of vetting these issues and making sure that the things that we are bringing here, I mean, I don't think there's a council member up here that would say a business is not welcome. Every business is welcome here in York County, period. The question is, at what point and when do we, do we extend tax breaks? Some folks call them corporate welfare. I get this question from my constituents. Why are you doing this when the jobs that they are bringing in don't pay a livable wage? Don't pay, you know, the majority of the jobs that come in don't pay the wage that's necessary for those folks to be able to live here, which, to my knowledge, the only city that's done a study on that has been the city of Rock Hill, and they've, they've solicited, went through to do that study, and they've determined, and I think we should get that study, and I think we as council members should have a frank discussion about it. I think we need to make sure that when we're extending these incentives, we aren't making a problem worse. The city of Rock Hill has a, our school district has a 50% to 60% free and reduced lunch. Are we making it worse? Are we making it better? I think this is a root discussion that is not at all someone saying, "I'm opposed to development." It's, it's just us having a frank conversation, saying, "We want to make sure that the development we bring in is going, is not going to cause us to have to ask other taxpayers to come in and kick in to pay for subsidized housing, because we're not making sure that they're making the amount of money they need to live here." Some things that I would like for this council to consider, if we have a workshop and just have a discussion about this, is that we give these incentives to businesses that pay a livable wage, that we limit these incentives to warehouse and distribution that pay low wages and actually cause tremendous problems to our roads and infrastructure. And that with respect to our spec buildings, apparent, I just became aware of this, and I'm not sure how pervasive it is, but with our spec buildings, it seems that we extend Philo agreements without making sure that they've put in the required investment that entitles them to be reviewed for a Philo agreement. And so I think I would like to have those three issues reviewed, and I'd like for us to discuss it and make sure that the decisions we're making here are looking out for our constituents and that we're, we are extending these incentives to businesses that should get them, because they're doing a good job of making sure that we aren't having to subsidize and do other things that are, that are a potential problem to our community.
Mr. Winkler.
Without us getting into a big discussion tonight, I'd just like to say as chair of the Economic Development Committee, I'd like to see Councilmember Cox's concerns put on a future workshop for us as a whole council to address those issues, so.
We will make sure they hit soonish. We got, we got a lot of, we have a lot of budget workshops coming on, we have just a lot of things.
Did you say soonish?
Yeah, I said soonish.
Okay.
We'll get it in the next few months. I'll make sure of that. I just, April I know is full up. I imagine May is going to be dedicated almost exclusively to the budget, so it may be June, but we will certainly address this. And I want to think I've also talked with Mr. Shanahan about is, meeting like tonight, at 6:20, 6:26, if we're lucky, we'll be done by 6:45, 6:50. We could put a workshop after something like this and do that. So that's something we're going to, he and I are discussing on ways to try to get some of these ideas that people want to talk about in front of us, and, you know, it would only extend us here by an hour, but I don't have any problem with that. Anyone else with a new agenda item?
Not a new agenda, just a comment.
Sure.
So in our consent agenda, for everyone that didn't have a chance to look at it, was a resolution honoring Detective Johnny Martin for his service to York County of 25 years. So when it's in a consent agenda, it's kind of difficult to recognize that person, but as a council, I think we need to thank him, so I'm grateful to Johnny for his service to the county.
Mr. Black.
And I appreciate that point, kind of slides by us in consent agenda, but just for everybody's knowledge, Public Safety Committing, Committee meeting Friday. Update on the tenure plan, we're going to, the main reason I mention it is because we're going to have feedback for any fire chiefs that want to come and talk, and also a discussion on a fireboat for Lake Wiley. FYI.
Anyone else? Citizens Concerns, Larry Byrd to address council regarding the impact of the Morningstar case to the county.
Good evening. I'm Larry Byrd, and I live in Fort Mill. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I come as a private citizen and a president of the Fort Mill local initiative. I come to Fort, I came to Fort Mill to live in the Morningstar Tower and be able to live in a 55-plus community of like-minded people who want to have a purpose in their phase, in this phase of life, the latter phase. Society has a tendency to cast out older folks in their latter years. Morningstar has a ministry goal of honoring their mothers and fathers, but their main goal is refiring people to be active in ministry. And this includes missions overseas, prison ministry, nursing home ministry, teaching, counseling, helping the downtrodden, helping solve human trafficking problems, helping out in disaster preparation and response, and above all, being good neighbors. I believe it is time to eliminate all barriers preventing completion of the tower project, whether true or false, between the Morningstar Church and the community. I believe we have a very caring people on the Morningstar staff and also in the congregation who have a mission in life, and that is to make this county a better place to live for everyone. I really like and enjoy York County residents, and that includes members of the county council. I've had the honor and pleasure of working with some members of the present council. My topic is the Morningstar Tower and where the county is as a result of the recent state Supreme Court's decision to hear Morningstar's case. The tower is still vacant, and I've been waiting nine years for this structure to be completed. The tower has been standing for 32 years. There has been many delays caused by what? Is it misunderstandings, incorrect information, distrust, false accusations, and above all, lack of knowledge about the importance of this tower to Morningstar's ministry and long-term goals? long-term goals? Morningstar Ministry's completed tower project is an integral part of the ministry. This will fulfill the biblical mandate to honor your fathers and mothers, as well as the biblical mandate to honor the elders or elderly, which is connected to the reason for completing the tower project. This will also be an on-ramp for ministries throughout the church, including teaching, the arts, writing, and fellowship. Older people need fellowship, which allows for a better quality of life, and could add productive years to one's life. Worship, prayer, fellowship, and personal ministry, and gatherings will take place at the tower. These are all First Amendment rights in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Residents will be ministered to, encouraged, and refired, not retired. People need to have a purpose to live and go on, and have a good purpose. The non-development of this tower has prevented people from moving here. Many are still waiting and getting older every day. I know you understand this fact about aging. I know you have parents that are aging. Time is just, has a way of rolling on. Like I said, the tower has been vacant for 32 years. So the delay has had an impact on Morningstar's plan to take care of seniors 55 and over. Living in a community with like-minded people is a privilege in America. Just look at the Dell Web developments in Fort Mill, I think it's Carolina Orchards, and also Westminster Towers in Rock Hill. The delay in finishing the tower project has caused me great disappointment. I've asked myself, why? Why the delays? Why the mistrust? Do we have a county government that works for and with the people? Do we have an ally in county government that stands for liberty and justice for all? Will county government allow 55, the 55 and over crowd to live where they desire? I would like to believe that the answer to these questions is yes, but at this time, this is not happening. Where is justice in the Morningstar Tower project? Another key fact to bring out is that Morningstar does own the property. This is not government property. Also, everyone who owns property understands the responsibility of being a good steward. This means taking care of the property and managing it with integrity and wisdom. I do have concerns about how much money has been spent, either by the county in blocking the project, or Morningstar pushing for the completion of this project. How is our tax money being spent? Is it, or has it, been spent on blocking seniors of faith from coming in and living in the tower? Can you recall counselors and others when a similar project has been stopped, or denied, or threatened to be torn down? Was there distrust, discord, or disappointment like there has been in this project? Where has the press obtained their information in order to print or report negative and sometimes inaccurate information on the tower? Have other development projects in your county had bad press? Would this have happened to a project that was not associated with a church or a ministry? Why has this project been any different than any other development project in this county? At the present time, there are many projects being built in York County. Why isn't the Morningstar Tower project one of those being completed at this time? There have been meetings, informal meetings, formal meetings, hearings, preparing for court, going to court, preparation for Court of Appeals, and most likely, other planning and administrative actions, which indeed cost money. Morningstar court cases include, I believe, a district court, the South Carolina Court of Appeals, and right now, I believe, the South Carolina Supreme Court has agreed to hear Morningstar's case. We do have, I think there is another case they have, and it's a, a federal lawsuit has been filed, which is based on First Amendment rights, in addition to the South Carolina Religious Freedom Act. And I believe this takes the case to a whole new level. Again, I ask the question, why is Morningstar not allowed to go forward with this project? Is it because of trust, bias towards a church, residual bitterness, pride, fear, or just plain religious discrimination? County taxes could have been spent on county expenditures which are mounting as a result of the boom cycle that is taking place. Morningstar could have spent the money on the tower construction. Do the citizens of York County know how much tax money has been spent on this project to impede development? I believe that can be revealed by a FOIA request, F-O-I-A. The construction of Morningstar Tower will spur economic growth to York County, and it will provide jobs. It will create more spending by citizens on goods and services. It also will bring in upstanding citizens who will have a positive impact on the county. I believe that this is a win-win situation for the county and Morningstar. I believe that completing the tower will be of great benefit to Morningstar and York County. With the roadblocks and delays removed, it is really great to see a vision of a completed project. I look forward to the tower being completed, so that my wife and I can live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. I move we go into executive session for receipt of legal advice concerning Clausen's EBA appeal, receipt of legal advice in the CWS water increase, and receipt of legal advice and consider approving settlement in EEOC claim of former magistrate.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna go directly into executive session. Come out of executive session, are there any motions?
Yes, sir. I move to approve settlement provisions in EEOC claim the former York County magistrate has discussed in executive session. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Are there any other motions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.